All right, good evening. This is the meeting, the city council meeting for April 8th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu, here. Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey. Ms. Colacetti, here. Ms. Bishop. Ms. Wilkin, here. Mr. Quizenberry. Mayor Marlin.
All right, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings for February 19th, 2024, the Committee of the Whole minutes. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 19th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Jaya. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, those are approved. Any additions to the agenda tonight? Excellent. We do not have any presentations listed on our agenda. Now is the time for public input. If you would like to address the City Council, please do so at the microphone and state your name for the record. You will have five minutes. Are there any emails that people would like to read? Okay. Next item is Council Input and Communications. Would anybody from the Council like to provide input? Grace?
Just quick thing, since we had some helpful reminders earlier about the annual town board meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, if people would like to join.
All right, reports of standing committees, there is none. Next up on the agenda is the Committee of the Whole, Councilmember Jaya.
Right, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, we have two items on the consent agenda that I would like to move for approval, or make a recommendation for approval. The first is ordinance number 2024-04-017, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Trails Drive at Myra Ridge Drive, and Resolution Number 2024-04-016R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class A designation for Yellow Rabbit LLC doing business as Yellow Rabbit, 136 West Main Street, Urbana, Illinois.
Seconding.
Jaya, for clarification, you had said recommendation for approval. Is this just approval of the consent?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
Just approval of the consent.
I just wanted to make sure. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next item is on the regular agenda, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, move Resolution Number 2024-04-015R, Resolution, sorry, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel task tax for Philo Road resurfacing. The recommendation for approval, or sorry, for approval. Have it. For approval.
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Grace?
I got lazy this weekend and was like, ah, we already read it last week. So I didn't check the numbers, if just, if those look right, if we could clarify everyone else who's read them. I think that was the thing last week, was we needed some number correction, and I didn't go through and double check that, so I just wanted if we could speak on that.
I did check the numbers when I read the submission, so I think everything is accurate based on what John had said when he was making his presentation, so I think it's good to go.
Any other discussion?
No, thank you.
Since this is a resolution, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, shucks. That's okay.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
I keep waiting for more people. All right, next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-04-
Wait, don't I have to do that one?
Yes.
It's a day. So, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, for approval, ordinance number 2024-04-016, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3.5, ambulance services.
Seconding.
All right, moved by Jaya, seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Grace?
I do have a question to throw out there for consideration, staff and council, as I see, now that, thank you, Will, for sending the track changes version of the ordinance, I see that we took out the definition of location, or ambulance location, and I see that we do have location kind of referenced in there, that the fire chief inspects the operational locations of the franchised ambulance. There's that part about the city, and any company would agree on any other contracts if one were stationed there, and so I did just want to throw out the idea that I think it would make sense to consider defining some of those terms. What do we mean located? What do we mean stationed? Especially if we're having requirements on it. And then I was also thinking that it seems like, and curious of if we have anyone in the field to answer, that the response time is the main critical thing to focus on there, and that that's still there regardless. But I do think that it, I could see down the road, especially over the next 10 years, you could get in the weeds about what does location, station, and operational location mean in here, as they're specifically referenced in the contract, or in the ordinance, sorry.
All right, is there any staff that could address that?
I think I can address a little bit of it. So the link, the definitions that were deleted, working with legal, either had a reference in state law, or had kind of a common definition. So as we kind of updated ordinances, we tried to eliminate excessive definitions that kind of have common meanings. There's probably not a serious harm of adding additional wordage in the ordinance, although sometimes that, so the reason not to is just that it does get out of date, and then with the ordinance changes, if that's something that were to cause confusion in the future, we can always add it in. It's up to the City Council to, you know, amend the city code. So if that's something in the future that we thought, a common understanding of the word location caused difficulties with regard to the franchises, we could always clarify it at that point as well.
Thank you.
Will that have any impact on the contract if the ordinance changes and the contract lasts for 10 years?
Say that again?
If we change something in the ordinance before the 10-year contract?
The, I can't remember the exact section number in the contract, but the franchise agreement does mention that the ambulance service provider will abide by the ordinance as amended from time to time, so that would not have a bearing on the specific terms of the contract.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Grace?
Thank you for that. And then if I may ask then, what is our state-defined or common operational definition of location? Because some of that, I have some experiences with places like church parking lots that are empty and things, and ambulance is often there because it's a central location, although that's not like an agreed thing, it's just the church doesn't mind if they're in that parking lot. So I guess I don't know what stationed or located means, if you could define that, what we're asking of ambulance franchise in Urbana.
So my guess is it's not defined states that you, and I don't have the definition right in front of me at this point in time that I can quote back to you.
Thank you. So then I'm just, yeah, don't know if there's recommendations, if people have any strong feelings about looking into definitions in this round of an ordinance, or thinking, considering it for something for the future?
Anybody else like to discuss? I'm looking at Jaya just because Chris is here, and I can see him right here.
The definitions that I see taken out, I don't have a problem with them being taken out at this time, but I'm also open to adding additional definitions if that is a preference.
Do you have any language, Grace, that you would like to add?
No, I don't. I feel like the thing would be go on yes or no tonight and consider adding it later, or I don't know procedurally if there is a deadline, if it's a will of council tonight to keep this in council slash send it back to Cal, or whatever procedurally we do to get it in this round. You know, I feel like we could either take a week or two now and add it and get it done this one time, or we could go and add it later.
There is a motion on the floor right now. Okay, no more discussion, and we're going to vote on this motion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
No.
All right, that motion carries.
Final item from the Committee of the Whole that I'd like to move for approval is Resolution Number 2024-04-014R, a resolution granting an ambulance service franchise with Aero Ambulance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chris. Is there any discussion? Grace?
I'll just reiterate some of my points from last week. It doesn't sit comfortably with me to be locked into this for 10 years without a voluntary termination agreement here, and also just wanted to point out that this does limit the city from any other ambulance franchise for the next 10 years. So even if things change, this is what it is exclusively for the next 10 years. So for that, I'm not sitting comfortable to such a big time commitment.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
No.
All right, that motion carries. That is it for the Committee of the Whole. Reports of special committees, there is none. Reports of officers?
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. We have new business on the docket. This is Resolution Number 2024-04-017R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding Illinois American Water Company rate increase case.
This, this request for an intergovernmental agreement is similar to what we have entered into in 2016 and 2022 with Illinois American Water, when they proposed rate increases. We pool our resources with other local jurisdictions so that we can hire a single attorney to advocate on behalf of our residents and businesses, and even though we haven't been successful in completely eliminating any increase, we have been successful in reducing the amount of the increases that Illinois American Water has been able to get. It's time-sensitive, which is why it's new business at the council, and it didn't go to the Committee of the Whole. So happy to answer any questions, but this is very similar to what we've done in the past.
Questions for Carol. Chris?
Remind me again, Carol, it's about $8,000 that the city's contributing?
I think that's our share. Yeah, 8,000 and change.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Carol? Grace?
Thank you. And just the off-the-mic thing, that in the table, there's, or in the packet, there's that nice table that lays it down, and Urbana ours was 8,000, the change was $962.7, oh, oh my gosh, $964.07. My question was if there's been any communication as to any justifiable rate increases, as far as any increase in like water quality, or filtering, or because of new standards? Didn't know if you knew if there was any correlation to quality of water in these proposed rate hikes?
I don't know any of the details, but I'd be happy to find out more if, if I can. There's not a lot of detail that I was able to get, but I'm sure as we proceed through the case, we'll get more.
Thank you.
So Carol, we did this in 2022, 2021 before, and they had asked for a giant increase. Looks like they did get some increase. Do you know the percentage that they got in 2022?
I don't, but I can find out.
I think that that would be helpful, just for us to be able to, as informational, not in terms of this item. All right, any other questions for staff? May have a motion?
Like to motion, Resolution Number 2024-04-017R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding Illinois American Water Company rate increase case.
Second. Moved by Chris, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Will the clerk, this is a resolution, yeah, final action. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a staff appointment for Thomas E. Webb Jr. as Information Technology Manager, effective April 15th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. I'm going to read the memo that the mayor wrote about this position. The Information Technology Manager is one of the 14 staff positions appointed by the mayor with approval of the City Council, Urbana City Code, Article III, Section 2-42. Per City Code, council members were provided with the summary of the appointees' qualifications for office two weeks prior to consideration of the appointment. Relationship to the city's services and priorities. Impact on core services. The Information Technology Manager serves in the Executive Department and manages information services for all city departments, as well as providing support services to several local government entities. Major responsibilities include purchase, installation, and user support, and training for installed software and hardware, identifying and new, sorry, identifying and supporting new information technologies to facilitate department operations, supervising operation of the Urbana Public Television, representing the city on various intergovernmental boards, administering the city's website, maintaining the city's technology security systems and protocols, and other duties related to the management of the city's communication infrastructure. Thomas Webb Jr. holds an MS in Computer Technology and a certified, and a certificate in technology security from Eastern Illinois University, and a BBS in Aviation Human Factors from the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign. Thomas Webb has managed, served as a manager, field services, endpoint management, and field technology services infrastructure analyst for the Information Technology Group at Oregon Health and Science University. Prior to that, he served as a specialist with Engineering IT Shared Services at the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign. He holds certifications in Microsoft 365, Certified in Modern Desktop Administrator Associate, JAMP Certified Tech, and Mac OS Support Essentials 10.1.4. On behalf of the mayor, the City Council is asked to approve the appointment of Thomas Webb Jr. as the Information Technology Manager, effective April 15th, 2024.
Okay. I would like to motion that we accept Thomas E. Webb Jr. for Information Technology Manager, effective April 15th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Second. Moved by Chris, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Grace?
Quick question and comment. This is for Sanford is leaving, retiring, moving on to greener pastures? Okay, excellent. Well, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Sanford for his help in taking emails about potential spam things over the years, and some trainings, and managing that sort of stuff, and welcome to Thomas, our likely new IT manager, and yeah, welcome aboard. We'll try not to click on spam emails and make things difficult for you.
Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome to the city of Urbana.
Can I just say one thing about Sanford? Sanford's last day will be May, May 3rd, so there'll be some overlap between Thomas and Sanford, and you still have time to wish Sanford well, and he makes a point of saying he's not retiring.
We should revisit the IT policy of when we have to change our password. I'm just putting that out there. Because it doesn't happen anywhere else. We're happy to talk about that later. All right, the last item on our agenda is a discussion of ward maps, and I'd like to propose that this discussion center on maps that just aren't going to work. And so with that, I will let Chris talk.
Just to get the party started, I do not like Maps 4 and 3. Just put that on the record.
I concur with 3.
I mean, this is going to be kind of tough because we're all looking at our wards, and hard to consider other people's wards, but those are the two, 3 and 4, that I, I'll just put that out there.
Is anybody else, well, let's just start with number 3. What do people think about Map 3?
I need a moment to pull up the, not just the image, but the, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
From last time, so just one moment, please.
Mayor, I just had a question in the meantime.
Yes, Grace.
I'm having trouble with this Daze redistricting software, and I even bit the bullet and like made a password and signed in and did all the things, and I can't figure out how to manipulate it myself, so I didn't know if, yeah, so I'm talking to Will.
I talked to Will because I had the same problem.
Yeah, I'm talking to Will there, sorry, yeah. If we could have some kinds of instructions or tutorial, because also just as the context that, as helpful as it is, and I really appreciate that people took the time to put together these seven suggested maps, to keep in mind that these are not our only options by any means, and yeah, the way my mind works, I really need to get in there and be able to manipulate it, and I can't do that, so I'm really struggling to make any kinds of informed decision tonight.
Yeah, so there are a couple of videos on DRA, and then during regular business hours, feel free to call, and we can set up a Zoom link, and I can help you work through it. A couple of tricky things are, there's a little lock button on each one of the layers, and you have to make sure that's unlocked, especially with, when you're clicking one of the maps from the packet, you have to copy it and then unlock the layers, and then there's a bunch of other little ones that I can't really necessarily diagnose without working, being, you know, in the system right now.
Thank you so much. And so you said, in addition to those helpful tips on the Daze redistricting video or website, they have some helpful tips or trainings?
Yeah, they have some tutorial information to help you get started, and then if council members still want a little bit of extra help, I'm available at any time. Well, not any time, but by appointment.
Yes, thank you very much. As much as I appreciate it, that's during the times when I legally can't be working on city stuff, so I'll try and figure it out on my own, and I'll let you know as a last resort. Thank you, I do appreciate that, Will.
The big change for me, Grace, was unlocking every single ward, because I thought I should just unlock the ward that I wanted to change. No, unlock them all. All right, let's, Chris has suggested that Map Ward 3, and I'm trying to pull up the scoring here. DRA score of 33 bad. That's one of them.
Ooh, other question, on the minority representation score, I'm assuming that higher number is better? Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
And then also for compactness, higher number, more compact?
Yes.
All right, so I'm just going to read so that the public has the information on Map 3. All of the maps meet, contains the residence of the incumbent city council member, is based on the 2020 data, certified by the official, the Illinois Secretary of State. Then there are scores. One of them is for it to be compact and contiguous. I can't, thank you, contiguous. Ward should be substantially equal in population. I believe it's 10%, it can't go over 10% deviation. Proposed map should avoid fragmenting or packing racial minority communities. I think for the most part, all of them are roughly the same, between 50 and 64 is the range for all seven maps. The proposed map should not dilute the voting strength of racial minority populations. Again, those are very similar, from 50 all the way up to 64. Proposed maps may take into consideration respecting traditional neighborhoods and existing subdivisions, and I guess all of it is plausible, except for Map 6. And then the last one, precincts should not be divided between two or more wards unless necessary to equalize population between wards. All of those are plausible, except for number 6 again.
Could you remind us why not 6?
I'm sorry?
What's wrong with 6 that eliminates it?
It's, precincts should not be divided between two or more wards unless necessary to equalize population between wards.
And the precincts are these other shapes in here that we were talking about? Are they blocks or block grants, or?
The lines that you see printed out on the maps are not necessarily the precinct lines, those don't, those aren't clearly defined as a separate layer on these maps. You'd have to look into the software to see what the precincts are. Referencing the table about the scores, you'll note that, you know, the ones that kind of have a somewhat subjective interpretation, you know, number 10, you know, the review didn't take a very strong stance on any of it. Map number 6 did have the lowest compactness score, which on the DRA website, if you look on the score bar that they have, they have kind of subjective ratings, you know, bad, okay, fair, good, and that was, that one was the lowest. That's how that one got that particular rating during the review.
I see. Because I think what, 6 does have the highest minority representation score, and yeah, one of the lower compactness, and saying it's automatically ruled out because of splitting precincts, or that's not an automatic disqualifier?
None of it is an automatic disqualifier. These are just the guidelines that we set up.
Slash, did we, were we able to find anything about, any legal obligation about the incumbent council member? About if that was a legal requirement to not redistrict someone out?
That requirement comes from the guidelines adopted. Some people consider that a best practice for ward redistricting, but that is not a statutory requirement.
All right, I guess my question tonight is, are we comfortable throwing out, not throwing out, putting aside some of these maps? And at the moment, we're talking about number 3. Jaya?
I guess under what, like using what criteria, right? Because, you know, if we're just looking at, you know, current maps versus these, Map 3 keeps Ward 4 a lot closer than a lot of these other ones, so I think, I don't have a problem with saying, let's start narrowing it down, but I think that we need to agree on what, what are we using to do that, right? So it doesn't just feel like, well, I like the way this one looks better because it, you know, it contains more of my current ward, but, you know, are we using the scores? Are we thinking about minimizing the inconvenience so that fewer people have to change wards or realize who their ward is, you know, what ward they're in now? I think we need some sort of, something to go off of, not just whim, so that we're being consistent.
Will, what is the absolute deadline for this?
I don't know if there's a date, certain, I think the mayor's referenced in the previous meetings, that it has to be completed before the filing petitions for the next municipal election. I don't know the exact date off the top of my head. There is a little bit of time, you know, this, if we've missed the deadline, that has been previously articulated of, I think, I don't know, the first or second week of May, there's certainly a little bit of leeway there, where we're not brushing up against any immediate deadline.
Okay, thank you. Grace?
Yeah, I kind of feel a little hesitant to start like throwing out some or ranking these existing ones. I do feel like, I feel like-
I do feel like, I feel like none of these maps is going to be exactly what we end on. And so, yeah, I think of Jaya's points of maybe if we agree on some kind of shared priority values. And then again, I would like some time to mess with it, and we'll take a persistent effort at messing with the software before next week.
All right, so one of Jaya's suggestions was the existing ward map and whether or not we should be doing a severe deviation from it? Was that correct? Or if we should, how much we should account for that in the process?
For that to at least be a discussion, right? Of are we thinking about that as a factor? It's not one of the things that we set as a requirement for creating the maps. I think that the criteria we used made sense, but I think also thinking about what's going to be the least disruptive for our residents is important.
I agree. I mean, from my personal, and I can talk because this is just discussion, right? There's no, okay. My personal preference would be to try and keep wards similar. There's going to be issues with, really, everybody who's close to campus, ward three, ward two, ward one. Ward four is actually one of the harder ones to figure out here, in my opinion.
So just to, you know, capture some of what might not have been caught on, on mics is, you know, at least with ward four, it is, it is already an unusual shape, and it already has a very diverse range of different parts of our community. And so, you know, as we're thinking about the existing mix, I will, I will say for, for myself, that's something that I, I struggle with because I think that diversity is one of the incredible things about the fourth ward, that it's not particularly campus focused, and it's not particularly Una focused, right? It has little bits of a lot of our different communities, and I think that that's actually a strength. I know when, when I ran, I was told, and I, you know, I've in fact checked this, but I believe that I might be the first person to represent the fourth ward who's not from West Urbana, right? That, you know, and I think when you consider the fact that we've already got two other wards that are pretty focused in West Urbana, I do think it's important to think about that balance too of like, how are the neighborhoods represented? Where, you know, the, and again, I can only speak for my ward, right? And I think it's going to be hard for all of us to step outside of that. You know, the, the numbers make it look easy, but then when you look at the map, I do think it makes it much more complicated because you lose the nuance of the existing communities. And I think some, there's, there's more, they're a little bit more similar, and then there are some that are pretty, pretty different depending on what part of the ward you're in. I mean, certainly, I've been talking about the fourth ward, but if you look at ward five as another example, there's a lot of variation in terms of the different areas that it's covering, and I don't think that's a bad thing. But I think that's a conversation that we should be having.
Yeah, I think that one of the reasons that ward one, ward two, and ward three are kind of varying shapes here is because we do have such a high concentration of students. It's a very dense area. I, I would prefer to have more variety and not just have one ward that is basically dorms. Right? So that's one of the criteria that I was looking at. Once again, as you said, we're all kind of looking at our own wards. As I was looking at the maps on the redistricting site, it was a challenge. I understand, and I really appreciate the citizens who took the time and effort to do this. One of the things as I was looking between ward three and ward five, because both of them had to basically grow in area, this kind of, I don't know how to describe it. Over there kind of by, there's Cunningham, the split between ward five and ward three. I don't know if it's possible to break up some of that so that that balances a little bit more. We can pull some of the stuff up from the bottom of ward five. I guess I don't know what the possibilities are beyond what we have here. I'm looking at Will because it would require us to have the population numbers if we were going to break up any of these items. So does, do you know if the Dave's does that?
It has, if you click on a block, it will show you what the population is. Whether or not that spits it out in easily producible format for all of the, the blocks, I don't know. But if you're in the system and you click on a block, you, you can see what the individual population is.
Can you investigate that to see if we can split that apart a little bit? That would help us navigate that. Thank you. All right, I guess we need more time, it sounds like. And perhaps homework would be to think through what are some of the criteria? Grace?
Yes, agree with that. I was just going to say my thoughts I had here agreeing with some of the, and recapping some of the criteria that we talked about is, you know, following some of our recommended guidelines off the bat with population, et cetera, and then focusing on minority representativeness, compactness, and being somewhat similar to older, the existing wards, and acknowledging that diversity of wards, which I also, yeah, can relate to with ward six, and would like to avoid something like ward four makes it kind of like a suburb ward exclusively. I think that it is a really beautiful diverse ward currently, and think that there are ways we could, yeah, but I agree, I think each of us are going to have to think about some of the uniqueness of the areas on the map outside of just geographically. So I just wanted to reiterate those points, and I agree, we've got some interesting work and thoughts ahead.
Anybody else have ideas? Jaya?
It's not an idea, but it's a, I guess, a question and a comment. So one thing is going back to the sixth map of, I think, some of the concerns of if we are talking about, you know, some of the, making sure it's contiguous and not really separating things out. There is that chunk of ward seven that is kind of floating. There's a very narrow strip. So I, I would say that kind of thing I would prioritize avoiding, like they're all going to be weird shapes. That, that's, you know, the nature of our current map. But to make, I guess that's a suggestion for a criteria to think about in addition to, you know, the, the diversity of the community, not just in terms of like racial or socioeconomic, but like the different neighborhood kind of aspects of it. But also thinking about, are there pieces that really don't make sense to be part of another ward? So that's, that's a suggestion. But then for Chris, I'm curious, what, what is it about map three that you're like, no way, I'm done?
I didn't like the, the way it was. I guess I didn't like the way it just had that strip way east. You know, just, just odd the way that's is. And then it kind of just goes way south, I, to Pennsylvania. I don't know, just thought it was going in too many different directions at once. But, you know, I, if, if other wards are in better shape on ward three, I could be talked back into it. I'm not, I was just trying to start the conversation. These are my ones that I thought.
Jaya?
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, that's helpful, and I think, I see that. I mean, ward four already has a couple of those funky little long limbs, so you get used to them. But I think for, for me, and again, I want to compare it to the, you know, the data that's related to it, not just the image, in terms of, you know, map three is pretty close to the current ward four. So, right, and same thing with, you know, six has got a chunk that's now, you know, would be part of ward five, but some of the other ones are pretty close or closer. So I would say let's, let's keep three in the mix as we're having this conversation.
We can do that. I, and I was just trying to get things started. And I can be talked back into bringing three back into play, and you're all going to have your priority criteria and your thoughts about this. And I'm willing to work with everybody to kind of find, I mean, I was impressed that all the maps have equalized pretty much the population finally. In ward two, we had too few people, so I'm glad to see it equalized out.
So just as a comment, map ward three for, sorry, ward two for map three looks like a T-Rex. I'm just saying. Yes. Well, and you've got a tail, and you've got the feet.
Yeah.
Looks like a T-Rex.
That sounds like a, in favor.
Um, I, you know, one thing that I think, going back to map ward six, I'm sorry, I keep mixing them up, map six ward map. I'm thinking that when we have these odd artifacts with ward seven, what I was hoping we could do was slice off a little bit of something else in ward four so that that could be in ward four or ward six, so that we can like make them a little, you know what I mean? Because right now it's an artifact of the program that we have. So if, once Will discovers whether or not we can break it down further, I think that might help some of these maps. Any other discussion? I got a gavel. I got to use a gavel tonight. All right, with no further business in front of the city council, this meeting is adjourned.